Okay, great. So it's December 7th and we have a fun special session today on flow. Planning to kind of take it pretty easy in December as everybody's going through the holidays and family time and reassessing and kind of use this as a time to consolidate and be present, build relationships with each other, talk about what's next. And then just as a little preview, I am feeling somewhat called to kind of, Jason, I think this is following up a little bit on the call with your group as well. To maybe do some kind of like a 12 week series or something to just go kind of rapid fire through like the journey that we've been on over the last years. Principles, vision, values, structure, calling, all the different parts that kind of have emerged out of that, out of our study of Mondragon and different models around the world to try to present a more comprehensive picture of where we're at and how this all might fit together so that anybody who wants to engage in that method of organization and federation can do so. So that's kind of where I'm, where I'm thinking we might go with that, Jason. There's been a couple of different groups that have asked for that. And so I'm thinking about rather than trying to replicate that, maybe just doing like a 12 week series with whoever, whoever cares and might want to join, maybe kick that off first week of January after everybody gets off back from the holidays. So. So Jason, I want to particularly ask you, yeah, we'll record that, we'll distribute it. That would let basically anybody start at week one. Anytime in the future and then kind of follow along. So it feels like it's almost kind of leaving bread trails. Anybody like week three that saw one of the recordings could go back to week one and start following through. But Jason, I wanted to specifically ask you because of the offer and they to your group, do you think that would, that would work? Okay. To start something like that first week of January?
I think it'd be fine.
Okay.
A chance to binge watch in March.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Totally. Okay. So we'll kind of, we'll kind of shoot for that. So. So please let me know if you'd like to be on the, be on the list for that and, and we'll kind of try to consolidate everything that we've learned over the last years, these different lifetimes of work that we've brought together. Present more of a structured series of that that could then lead to hopefully the right combination of relationship and community building and then also getting into action and enabling and supporting all the brilliant initiatives around the world that we're all aware of and want to make sure succeed. So. Beautiful. Okay. So, so Wendy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. I just wanted to clarify because you were talking specifically to Jason and inviting that you guys create this meeting, but then it seemed like you switched and said, so if you're interested, which you did you mean? Did you mean anyone in the room or is this something happening with a, with a subset of people?
I would like for this to be as universal as possible. So thank you for clarifying that, Wendy. So what I was trying to communicate was that Jason and a couple of other different nodes I think are, would have expressed that it might be useful to have us all try to get up to speed together on what we've all been learning and where we've arrived at. So I was just specifically asking Jason, cause I made an offer to whatever the 10 or 15 people that were on a governance call to host a little series. And so I'm trying to close the loop on that offer I made and everybody on this call is welcome. And I'm also gonna put it out on, you know, LinkedIn and wherever. So if anybody in any of our networks would like to kind of hear the consolidated version of what we've all been learning and at least, you know, our distillation of what we've been learning and kind of arrived at. Just want to create a structured way to go through that and start kind of building broader consensus and movement around them.
Okay. So another clarifying question. So would these be a series of meetings where you would present out more than receiving in? Or is it an opportunity for people to share more of what they're, they are seeing?
I think we would want to balance those really well. And Wendy, I think the conversation we had earlier today, if you would like to help co-design those sessions, we could try to balance those really well. But I, but I think ideally it would be something like presenting the kind of the key patterns, let's say that we feel like the ecosystems kind of arriving at and the key things that might be foundational. And then I think as you're saying, having creating a very strong forum for listening and corrective feedback on any places where those patterns, as we described them, might not be the best understanding that the ecosystem has. So there could be maybe a basic process of presenting out our, our current best understanding, listening and getting the corrective feedback and then presenting back out the, the group's best understanding. And then maybe after 12 weeks, we would arrive at a, at a pretty close shared understanding of some of the foundational patterns that would enable us to do what we want to next year. Does that sound appropriate?
I have thoughts, but I see Wendy's hand raised. So I thought.
Yeah, yeah, beautiful. Yeah. Wendy, please.
I think a combination of a facilitated process, but also maybe people producing their own bits of text about what I think will work. So you've got this sort of distributed knowledge about what is working, what has worked well over the last year. That takes in things that may not turn up in a facilitated process for a whole stack of different reasons. And it might mean that you have more voices, people who aren't coming to your facilitated process for that particular closure. Because there are a lot of people who've been involved over the year who have some very useful insights about what works and what doesn't. So it will give us more places to travel if something isn't turning up quite the way we'd like it to. Then we can sort of invite that voice back into the room if they even just want to visit for a little while. And then disappear again, because it's always has a possibility of just becoming too refined. And being open to not getting that right in an open process with X number of people, I think is always important. So anyway, I can, whatever length people write, if someone wants to write a page or a page and a half or two pages or whatever, I can work with that type of text. Just to give you a bigger context of what the process has ended up in a more bespoke, bespoke process.
Okay. So. So what I hear you say, what saying Wendy E is we'll have some number of people who want to engage in kind of the, the series. Well, other people dropping in or out, other people might be watching the videos on YouTube or whatever. You're inviting a process where we could invite anybody who is or kind of isn't in any kind of relationship to be able to submit and what they're perceiving about what we're talking about. Your offering that you could then process that and kind of help feed that all back into the group understanding. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And it's generally, it's possible in any scenario. And as you develop your process to be open to having the process run a different way, but also from the content that comes from the process. So you can do it both ways. So that you.
Okay. So, so Wendy E, I'm going to take you up on this offer because I've, I've been really fascinated. You've been advocating for this. I think this 12 week series is a really concrete time span in which we could work together for me to make sure that we, we honor all of the body of work you're bringing in. We try to embody it and invite it. So if you're up for it, I'm up for it. Let's do it. Okay.
Third reason that I also, or I was one of the people who suggested that Jason's projects could be a very good focus. And so he and I've got a sort of separate relationship that's developed around tracking the results of those projects. So it would be a third lens on what the client is expecting as well as the people who are doing the producing, as well as the process that does the production. So we'd learn a lot.
Yeah. So I think we, so we have, I think one of the great things that's happened over the last couple of months is we've developed this. We've developed a field of these projects that are immediately out there, including those and multiple people on this call that we would like to see succeed. So. Jason Forrest, others, if you would like to feed those in, we can talk about how those will relate. But I don't want to get too far in that today because we're going to do a special session on flow. Let's go to Wendy M, then I'll answer the questions in the chat, then I'll tee up the session for today and we'll see if we can tie in.
Yeah, that's fine. My question was actually the same. So I think somehow closing this off would be great. I just wanna with, with a couple of final thoughts. I want to put an exclamation point on Wendy E's offer. I see both the benefit of maybe even getting out something that people can answer over the holidays before the meeting to capture what the last year has been like. I heard her say that. And I just wanted to put an exclamation point on that, that it would be, might be really nice to do a pre thing and then a during thing. I heard you talk about the during thing, during version. I don't know what to call. I just realized that sounded really funny. That both are valuable.
Okay. So maybe we do like a so maybe we do a pre, like a, a session in December, we have some kind of process that unfolds over the 12 weeks, then maybe we get.
Yeah, yeah. Just, just saying you don't even need to do a session. You just ever, the people who've had experience over the last, you just send out the survey, but a session to create the survey. Yeah.
But then, then we could do one after, right? So, so I think if I have heard you well, Wendy E, over the last year, if we did something kind of pre, during, and then post, we'd be able to track in interesting ways, what the impact of that was and report out on that. That, that sounds, that sounds beautiful.
Yeah. And also I can partner with Wendy M to, to, to design that. Cause I think it's important that it captures and probably Pete as well, too. It's important that it captures the sort of action to reflection and experience spectrum. That means, yeah. And we, and we need to know where we're traveling on that continuously. And we, we're too much of one and too little of the other.
Cool. I'd be into that, Wendy. Other, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, please, Wendy.
It was just the simple question that a couple of people are asking chat that I had from before to when do you think this, the meetings will take place for this 12 week cycle? Will it be, will it be a replacement to these navigation meetings, which I would vote for personally, or would it be a separate set of meetings?
I am, my standard is to do the wise, right thing. My thought was that it would, that we would maybe do it at the same time. But I am completely open. So I think at this time, we have a critical mass of people who are here that could engage very meaningfully based on our collective understanding that might be hard to regain if we moved it. So that was going to basically be my proposal that we replace this meeting time with kind of a structured 12 week series. And then based on what unfolds during that 12 weeks, we reassess after that point. I could see a version in which there's let's see, there's nine people on the call today. I could see a version in which there's five to 10 of us that, that want to engage in that. I could see a version in which there's, you know, Jason has a, has a group and many other people on this group. I could see a version in which there's 20 or 30 people. It would be a certain environment. And then if there's more than that, right, then we would get into more of a webinar type thing where maybe there's a fishbowl type environment with, with other people that can observe, right? So basically what I'd like to do over the next three weeks is take stock of who's interested in that, find out whether we have five or 20 or more people than that, that want to engage. And then basically we could work together to design what the sessions would look like. So Wendy voted for replacing these Wednesday calls with that session. So let's say what, what that would look like is the next couple, we take Christmas week and maybe whatever off. The next couple of weeks, we could have social or special topic calls. Then we start up in January with this 12 week series to basically try to consolidate everything we've learned. Get it into a structured forum that then invites follow-up action and movement after that. Does anybody have a different understanding of what the wise, right answer would be or any objections, better ideas? Okay. Forrest, you asked the question, does that sound okay to your consciousness to, to basically replace this meeting time? Okay, great. I see Michael nodding, Bill nodding. Okay, great. Okay. So that'll be the plan. Then I'll, I'll work as hard as I can to consolidate. You know, my lifetime of work, the lifetimes of work that I brought together with many others of you on this call into a compelling 12 week series. So let's, let's talk a little bit, but just take two minutes to wrap that. So Wendy E and Wendy M, would it be? Would it be more helpful to you? So you guys have both offered to work on the story side that would lead to a survey or an invitation in December of what's happened in the past. We maybe have something while the series goes on and then we maybe have a post story that we can tell. So we can track this. May I join you guys in designing that? Or would you prefer to do it one-on-one without me? I mean that deeply honestly of what the best thing to do would be. Um, Wendy's, Wendy's.
And just, I think for us to have a go at it first, I think that it's good for us to practice using each other's expertise and just trust that, you know, having, having a first pass just takes some noise out of your world. And it's work that Wendy and I are sort of uniquely prepared for, I would say. So it's not a done deal. It's just a first pass. And then you'd have more to, to contribute, I think at that point.
Okay. So that's, that sounds perfect. Wendy M, do you have?
I'm, I was gonna say whatever sense Wendy has, I think, cause she knows the work that needs to be done. So.
Okay, perfect. So, so, so I sense you guys have offered to work together to kind of look at what that process would look like. Wendy, I, and I think in, in light of what you were doing, it's like super fortuitous timing for you guys to connect on that too. So if you, if you guys, if you guys take a pass through that, then I would love to, we can then have a three or more way dialogue to, to look at that. Then we'll get the survey out in December before we start. And then we'll, we'll follow the process through and that would be kind of the first time that you know, Wendy, we can, Wendy M, we could look at how that is reflected with your work as well.
And so co-design is actually important. If you want questions to be meaningful to people. So it's probably more about us designing process to make sure that we've got something that is meaningful to the people we want to respond to. So when we talked about, you know, a larger session, it might be that we do actually invite people to contribute to what that looks like, having got an agreed process and some basic directions. So it's probably two or three stages that we're looking at, but we'll find some time, hopefully Wendy M to do that shortly.
Who, who would, is there anybody else on the call that would like to be involved in the session where Wendy and then E show what they came up with and we present out, we can do that three-way or if anybody else would like to be included. Phil would like to be included. Great.
I'd like to invite Michael.
Is that, is that acceptance, Michael? Okay. So Bill, Wendy, Michael, Jordan.
Yeah, this is, yeah, it's wordsmithing. Michael's got great expertise there and very excellent insights.
Okay, great. So we have Bill, Wendy, Wendy, Michael and Jordan. That's five of us. Did I miss any hands or is that a good, good group to handle that task? Okay, perfect. So that, that's fantastic. I'm really, really excited, really, really grateful about that. That will Wendy E, I'm really, really excited to have our first kind of live experiment we can run with this. So fantastic. Okay. We'll go to we'll go to Bill, then I'm going to try to close this session and then I, I want to get into our session on flow if there's nothing more there. So Bill, welcome.
Hey. I appreciate the opportunity to see how this entire project is seen by people who have been coming to it from different angles. Their viewpoints and have learned along the way. And I think this is especially valuable to you, Jordan, that you can turn this loose and let people interpret it. And I think, I think there's treasure in that. I'm looking forward to hearing that perspective and I, and I'm available for questions answered along and any point along the way. And then this little group that will then do a review process, but I, I just wanted to echo how much I like this process.
Okay, beautiful. Well, that's great. So we have some good group wisdom on that. Okay. Any objections? So we, we've set our agenda for January, February, March, basically, which is fantastic. And I, I expect that week by week, as we go through this, we'll see green shoots popping out of everything that's fallen to the ground and fall and new life starting to emerge. So we've got our plan for the new year. We've got our time for the new year. We've got our uniquely equipped Wendy and Wendy creating the story narrative process with a group of five to review that and then get that out in December. So those are some amazing concrete steps that I'm really looking forward to. Any other thoughts to fold in before we switch to our special session on flow to follow up on the energy from last week? Okay, beautiful. So with that, yeah, Wendy, so we, last week we had a social call that we were not going to record that 15 minutes in, we decided we should record. And out of that, we got into some discussions on presence and flow and different things that might be foundational in the small groups that will spring out of our sessions in January. Wendy M made the offer to, in response to a question I asked her to consolidate some of the research and work she's been doing on flow. If that would be useful to the group, there was many people in the group who indicated they would like to see that. Wendy M being who she is followed through on that this week and yesterday sent an amazing kind of summary out. And so anyway, that's why we are following up here today. So Wendy, thank you so much for the work that you've been doing on this and your work this last week to meet the group's request and over to you.
Thanks, Jordan. Yeah. So I was in flow a lot, creating the summary. So I really enjoyed doing it. I'm going to put in the chat, the link to the Miro that I've created. So there you can see all the background research that I've done and everything else. I'm also putting in if it'll take it. I'm not sure it's going to take it. I'm trying to put in the image of it. I took a snapshot of the summary because it's an image format and for summary, I think it's too big a file. Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to share my screen and we're going to do it that way. Oh, can you enable screen sharing, please, Jordan? And Wendy E, do you see the link now? I just put it in. It was right above your comment.
Yeah, we do. You were doing as I was typing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We crossed, we crossed.
Yes. Okay. Yeah. Wendy, you should have access now.
Awesome. Thank you.
And Wendy, just as you start doing this, know that I actually wrote neuroscience papers for someone who's an expert on this subject.
Steven Kotler, right? You did.
Well, I've, I'm familiar with Steven Kotler's work, but also a colleague, Ian Snape and Mike Weeks from the States who worked with the US Army and such on flow and resilience internationally. So I actually helped write science, neuroscience papers about that for a couple of, for a good sort of four, six months at one stage. So it's an area that I know quite a lot about. So.
Please, please pipe up when you feel like it's, it's important to do so. And, or if you feel like I'm misrepresenting or any of that. So really my, my goal here, my interest in flow is around the conditions for human thriving, the conditions for human flourishing, the conditions for optimal human performance. And the reason why that's becoming such a catalytic force is because it seems to be at the center point of a lot of the conversations that I'm a part of, including the one that we had last week, which is how can we get people working together better? How can we get people into the, you know, when we talk about engagement and motivation to be involved in projects? It comes stems from a lot of this and there was another thing I wanted to say in introducing this, the agency also, people having individual agency and where their passions come from. So I think it's all I learned flow seven or eight years ago, but so much has happened as Wendy E was just saying about the, the neurology and the chemicals in the body, they've learned so much more that now it's starting to come out of this place of individual performance into group performance. And so I think it's really in a spot now, this research is really in a spot now where we can learn from it for the benefit of these, of these things. So I'm going to give you a quick overview. Most of what's here, I parroted straight from Steven Kotler's work. I have not layered on much else yet. This is just merging three or four TED talks of his and then summarizing it in a way that I thought would be helpful. So on the left are conditions for flow. The fact that we know flow can be learned, the fact that just basic things contribute to flow like sleeping well and eating well and and drinking water and getting some piece of exercise. And then we get into how to set the stage for flow, which includes all these conditions that I will cover in a minute, but primarily it's about being fully present. That is one of the main pre-conditions. So when we talk about deeply listening to each other, that's being in the deep now, putting our full focus on something, that's a big part of setting the stage. What the science shows is that we're hardwired for flow. So we have, it activates five performance enhancing neurochemicals in the brain. And I bet Wendy could add more to this, but this is a list of all the things that it does. And again, some of the states that we're desiring, when we come together and work in collaboration are represented in how the science, what this, what the science is showing, we know happens inside the brain from a, from a chemical standpoint. This is what people report. Basically flow feels flowy, but this is all the things that happen in all different disciplines. And then the reason why it's worth even talking about this is it's self-perpetuating because this brings about all the five neurochemicals in the brain that are pleasure related. We, as soon as we get a little bit of this, we want more of it. And so in terms of motivation and keeping people engaged, it's, it's a key component of it. And then it also has all these benefits in our life. It makes creative decision-making near perfect high speed. It's five times more productive. It works. So you could work one day, if you were in flow a hundred percent of the time, which is a question in of itself, but let's just wave a magic wand. And if you were flow a hundred percent of the time, you could work one day and be just as productive as working five days, not in flow. More innovative, innovative with the ability to detect new patterns over long periods of time. So a lot of the work that we're doing together is in this emergent inception spaces for us to be able to see patterns. Being in flow makes it much, much easier, being innovative from the creative associations that we make from those unknown and unseen places is part of this process as well. It's highly enhanced from being in flow. Athletic performance as a side benefit repeatedly allows us to push our boundaries. Reduces depression and anxiety. That's going to be more and more important as time goes on and the world feels more and more chaotic. And we, because the prefrontal cortex is, is deactivated, we literally get out of our own way. The inner critic dies. The nervous system resets. We're more in parasympathetic nervous system theta state. And we tend to have a sense of freedom. Basically, when we come together to do this work, or even if we have one brilliant person pushing forward, we can create situations that benefit all of humanity. Like creating paradigm shifts never seen before, impossible achievements, dreaming up full visions for the future, world-changing businesses in record time, on and on. Okay. So that gives you basically the overview. The part I'm going to bring our attention to now, and then I'll stop for thoughts and we can dive back into parts that you think are most interesting or you want to talk about. But first I want to talk about group flow. I just want to list, this was just a list that was provided in the, so I took it verbatim. Triggers are those things that are the pre-conditions. So this is basically just a summary of all the things that I just shared, which is complete concentration, equal participation. So checking egos at the door and agendas at the door and doing something together that may have nothing to do with my personal ego. Close listening, which, which helps with the deep now familiarity with each other, which is back to the connections, open communication with each other, shared goals, shared risk. Encouraging yes and so we stay in that space of out of the, out of the prefrontal judging cortex and into areas where we're being more playful. Autonomy and sense of control. I have choice about where I'm going to go next. All of this, I just want to put one cap on it. A lot of things that were happening this year in Um, a lot of things that were happening this year in meta project, a lot of people had pieces they wanted to contribute. A lot of people had things that they wanted to say, and it was hard for us to find a rhythm in order for that to happen. One of the other things that's optimal for flow is this constant sense of feedback loop that I know I'm on the right track. Otherwise, the engagement dies pretty quickly. So I just want to throw that piece in here, too. That was another big piece in the research, which was showing how feedback, even, even if it's possible, immediate feedback becomes a critical component to staying in the now and being continually motivated. And I think how that translates to group formation and group work is that we're giving each other either just appreciation can be a kind of feedback with each other, but it can morph into, hey, I'm gonna, we love your project, but let's put it on a, put, put it later. We're going to come back to it in a month. Just even something simple like that means that people feel heard and seen and there, and it gives them the feedback that they're in the right place and to keep engaging. So that's a quick overview. I'm going to stop sharing and we'll have a little discussion and then we can dive back in, um, if people find that of value. Thanks.
Hmm.
Beautiful, Wendy. Thank you.
So Wendy, I'm curious about, um, what you've read around Steven Kotler's work. Because it's, it's pretty solid. I mean, he's summarizing it really well. There are a lot of other people who, um, talk about flow. And Jason's just talked about one as a resource that I think it might be interesting to understand what some other views, because the science is pretty compelling. And I mean, even crosses over to the conversations is another of Kotler's books called Stealing Fire, I think it is, which is ones talking about how religion and spirituality and flow are very, very similar.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a really good thing, because otherwise we're up for a very rough rocky ride. The fact that you can show that there's a similarity between those two things means you can approach the challenges that we have from multiple directions and still use a process that you could actually name. Um, but Jason, you said that you've got a resource and I've got one too from the work that I've done. And I'm curious about Jason's and I'm also curious about your other readings. So now I'm a bit hung.
Yeah, John, um, John Lenhart, um, I, I held a bunch of um, conferences in the area where I brought people from across the nation to explore, how do you build a skill and then explore ultimately what turned into generativity and how do you, how do you help people flourish? Using their uniqueness. And so John Lenhart has done a bunch of work um, related to uniqueness and how uniqueness drives, um, how individual uniqueness then actually drives the way different people flow, that there's different flow patterns that happen um, for people depending on who they are. And there are definitely flow disruptors. As a matter of fact, in his, a lot of his work, it's like normally all the people you know, you know how to push their buttons, which is totally their flow disruptor. Um, what we tend not to do well is actually the opposite, which is enable, um, enable the, the flow that people have. And so he's done a bunch of work in schools. He's done work all over. He's, he's based in Florida now. And he's, he's like umami. So he's a acquired taste. Um, but I think it, it would be interesting to um, connect him in maybe to this group once or something, or connect him to some people and just have a couple of conversations. I think he would find that fascinating.
Hmm. Can I, um, just encourage you to, to share what resources you've got with me and anybody else? And I'm pretty good at consuming those things, um, because I'd like to integrate them a little bit. And I agree with you about the uniqueness because, um, quite often, you know, the checking ego at the door bit is the problematic part. Because once you start differentiating yourself, then it has to go your way. Then you are to take, you're naturally taking people out of a collective flow state. You have to spend quite a lot of time getting into some sort of correct regulated space and getting used to getting into a co-regulated space with all the differences. And if you can do that regularly and quickly, um, then you can get into a flow stack quite quickly and work efficiently. So dealing with unique and egos is like key.
And just I'll make one last quick comment, but, uh, so he took, I went through all of his courses type stuff. And when we did that a few years back, um, I connected him to Ross Akoff's work. And so a lot of his work is around, uh, is now based off Akoff's, I, I had a chance to work with Akoff about twenty some years ago. Um, and so it's about kind of dissolving problems, right? Not, not attacking or solving, but it gets back to some of the complex adaptive stuff too, but it's dissolving or dissolving, right? So not going in the direction of the problem, but going away from the problem can normally can, in a flow state, actually um, solve the problem or address the problem depending on what words you use.
There's something really important and emergent about, um, this idea. Uh, Jason, if you could, if you could drop that, um, spelling and reference and I'm taking notes, um, and hack MD, but I, I dropped the reference to Russ, um, Akoff, whatever that name was. Um, that'd be great. There's something really interesting and important to this differentiation too, that feels like it's critical to this moment in history, which is that a lot of this workaround, let's say, personal transformation or flow or these difference, these different things that kind of fit together. Like, so let's say there's this workaround, personal transformation. Say this workaround flow, let's say that Wendy E. was right in hypothesizing that the workaround flow and spirituality and religion are maybe connected. And so you're getting towards this idea of deep personal transformation and connection with the most transcendent and deepest things that can inform how we manifest ourselves in the world. Um, and how we manifest ourselves in the world in a way that's aligned with the people around us and our families and communities and societies. And we start to stack up and align all those different, different ways of being. So Wendy mentioned that that there's this maybe edge, this learning edge of this work on flow or transformation right now. Kielu, welcome. Thank you for, you said you wouldn't be here today because you are so busy. So it's wonderful to see the grace of sun shining on you and you being present. Thank you.
Root canal was a busy, but stunned. I've, I probably won't make sense and my mouth is droopy, but it's such a good topic. So very glad to be here. I'll be.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. We're, we're glad to have you and your journey not here. Praying, healing and love and blessing. So there's this interesting maybe, um, edge or the, like the edge of where this is right now, where a lot of this research came out over the last X number of years and we are learning how to do it individually. And then as we get into flow, something really interesting happens. Experientially, and I, I guess I won't say that objectively, I'll say for me, what happens is the more I get into flow, the more I find myself called and compelled to do things that are impossible to do alone. Uh, because I realize that what I can do alone is, is lacking and that I need to be able to take my world and stack up and align it with other worlds and other projects that are also in this space, state of flow. And then the more of those you start connecting with, the more you kind of realize, okay, there's, there are millions of people around the world drinking from the same source, so to speak, getting prompted in the same ways. And so Wendy, I think you mentioned this edge where some of the resource, research is starting to transition from, you know, how can we be in an individual flow state to achieve our own ends as best we understand them? Which is, which is good and limited to, how can we collectively achieve flow states that allow us to be far more wise, far more discerning, far more powerful, far more capable, far more impactful than any of us can be in isolation? So, um, the group can accept or reject that direction, but I would, I would love to have some discussion on that leading edge of group flow dynamics, um, and how that is similar to or different than, um, what we've done on individual programs.
Wendy, what I've read, um, and I'm assuming you've read most of Stephen's books. Um, but the ones where he, and this actually fits in with a lot of the other research that I've read, is that you have to, um, there's a co-regulation thing that when you've looked after yourself well enough, you're receptive to be able to practice getting into flow with other people and it needs, it can be done. It's almost instantaneous. Once you've done enough of the pre-work, but it's the pre-work is not something that you can skip. And it's what I sensed happened in this group most over this year is we sort of learned how to get into that co-regulated space. We have longer meetings. We can't, we can actually just drop into it now, I think. But doing it with strangers is difficult because when somebody new comes in and they haven't got that background, um, and I know I'm pretty confident that this is what infinity is doing and I've seen it in other places as well, certainly with clean language. So this is sort of agreement, the agenda that you've got to spend the time getting ready to be able to co-regulate. Um, and there, it happens magically sometimes at festivals and, and in art and other places, but then you leave it and you can only find it when you go back to that group of people and that activity. Um, to plan to, to do something together with a group of strangers, you sort of need to come prepared. Um, and we, we learnt our way into doing it of, over the year without naming it, we learned how to do it.
Think Kielu's been speaking of that as a really emergent thing, like we, it's almost like you taste something. You, you said, Wendy, we get into the spaces where it magically occurs and there's something so clearly viscerally experientially in every way different than other places we're in. And then the idea is, okay, that could be this ephemeral thing that can only occasionally happen magically. And I think what, um, Wendy E. and Wendy M. and Kielu and others are advocating for is no, that's actually a very concrete experiential reality that we can learn to experience on more and more, like, uh, let's say that that's one or two percent of our experience of our week now. It's like maybe we can expand that to three or four percent or maybe 10%. And so it's like a concrete thing that can be experienced more and more often as a skill that we get good at. And maybe if we could get really good at that skill, that's like the difference between cutting hundreds of years off of our path of development as a human species, because we can, we can skip some of these, um, levels to a high, higher state of wisdom or understanding or experience, whatever those ones are.
Yeah. So, oh, and I'm putting in here too, just very quickly, um, and you can find flow in other things that are not healthy, you know, like drugs and alcohol and things like that, little things that feel like flow that aren't. And so part of the, part of the challenge, I think, is to, to not let people just find it serendipitously, but give them an experience that they know that they could deliberately drop into that was healthy. Because it's very easy just to run, run away to the other ones or just escape in art or escaping something else that isn't working with other people. So I jumped in.
Love it. Wendy, thanks, Wendy.
So, yeah, I, this is so rich. I, I haven't read his books, interestingly enough. Um, I tend to be a person who skips across a bunch of stuff in an effort to weave the bigger picture together. So I really appreciate the deeper dives that people have on this call into some of the research and to more depth. And I think it's, would be nice to, um, to sense together where this could go next. I am happy to do continued research and I'm open to people saying if we want to understand, and I think particularly group, group coherence and group flow, these are the next, you know, people we want, maybe we want to have another discussion if people already have the expertise or send me on a journey of research and I'm happy to do that and add to it and come back. I will continue pursuing this line of questioning anyway, because it's something that is speaking so much in all the conversations that I'm having, that everybody's looking for these conditions. So the more I can codify it, the more I will. And then there'll be a place of we are sensing into. It's, it's a learning edge and we haven't found an expert yet, or we haven't found an experience yet that's informing us and we will help to shape it together as we go forward. But I'm trying to mine what's out there as much as we can. And you said it beautifully, Jordan, so that we're not saying, oh, this happens magically, but we're starting to realize that we can create the conditions. Just to add a little bit on that, um, and, and to, and to tack in and to tie into what Wendy E. was mentioning before about spirituality and religion. Um, I, I do believe that because the body has habitual and because we're talking about brainwaves and, and neurochemistry, there is a, we will probably find that there is a series of things that we can do at the beginning of meetings that adds to what Jordan already has in terms of just a, um, meditative time that helps to ground people into the now and makes them feel present and connected to the other people in the room that helps prepare us for the flow state that we are going to experience together. Um, and so that just, that makes me think of religion and how there's ritual around things and there's ceremony around things. And I think indigenous wisdom also has a lot, uh, to say about this and a lot to offer into this space as well. Thanks.
Love that comment of, um, intentionally preparing for what we're going to experience together. That's, that's a beautiful way to state that. All right. Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you. I feel a little self-conscious since I missed most the meeting and, you know, when I joined, I can, I cannot speak very well. If I just had a central procedure, right? And my tongue is thick, but it's too exciting. And, um, so Wendy, Wendy said most of what I was going to say, so I'll just say what's left, actually both Wendy's. So one is a co-regulation, the importance of that and the, the specific techniques and methods with which we can elicit those as well as, you know, tricks and methods from other places that we can do that from. Sorry, can't talk. And then the value of that contribution to other groups and to other people. And if we were to do what do Jordan have suggested we do, which is go and ask other people, other groups, what is it that you need? And then also observe, you know, they may not know that, but we may see that as we listen to them expressing whatever they are expressing, you know, see what is emerging. Then kind of put those things together. One thing is what emerges in our group or any groups we engage. Another one, what emerges if we try to bring this kind of coherence outside. And the third related aspect is just, hmm, bring that intention even more intentionally into the world for our speaking or maybe writing or, you know, whatever we do. This is one thing that the experts have studied and have done and they know a lot. That's wonderful. And we can read their stuff and learn from it. It's another one, what we practically are doing, because there's actually value in what we are doing or what we are trying to do. And we know there's value because we go and talk to other people in other places and we recognize it's of value to them. But beyond that, we also create that value literally by articulating it, literally by saying here has been our experience. This is what it looks like. And in some ways to draw parallels to the Lissiel Foundation's holistic business training, um, which just today had the launch and launched their, you know, website for the work of good living, vision for good living. Just by articulating, here's a process we're in. This is why we're doing, this is what we're doing. This is how we're doing. All of a sudden it brings it to another level that many other people can then relate to, connect to, build from. And we have enough to do that and going forward, especially as we engage with others. And we keep bringing that which both Wendy's were speaking of and Jordan, you spoke and you know, like, like all these different aspects are actually coming together. They will probably come together in the next action, more concrete ways as we engage. And then as we kind of, I don't want to call, call it document, but maybe articulate, you know, like we don't just leave it as an ephemeral thing left in the air and then we move on, but like write something, express something, share something, put it somewhere where it lands and it will become a resource, a living resource.
Yeah. Good. Eric, I'm just going to comment for less than a minute and then go to you. Um, Kielu, there's something so critical about what you said and it's reflected in so many of our conversations with this idea of, it's like we're, we're trying to progressively realize or bring into reality some kind of a way of being together that's at the edge of our ability to understand and articulate, much less like articulate it well, much less embody it occasionally must, much less embody it like all the time as our primary way of being. So everyone. So every one of those steps is a gift, right? It's like if you're not conscious and you sense something, but you, um. Can't see it and you just got back from a re canal, so you don't know how to speak it and you know, blah, blah, blah. But there's like some things, you just speak something. That's such a gift because it brings it one step closer like out of the realm into reality. And then if other people can, you know, comment and engage, and that's kind of maybe where we're getting on this group load, other people can comment and build on it. It's like, then you can look back at the transcript of the meeting and see how. Because you, um, with your droopy mouth said something that was approximately true, the best you could, and then other people built on it. All of a sudden we have a five-minute. Conversation that approximately paints a picture of something that previously had no words and was only an image in some of our minds. That body of work then creates the, the chance for it to become more and more real over time, right? Maybe even eventually getting into like process that groups can get trained in to. Like, and even if those things are at the edge of knowing, so that, that's, um. Okay, enough of that. Um, so thank you so much, Kulu. Really valuable you brought in. Eric.
Yeah, I would like to bring something like a, um. Beginning of the meeting somewhere, the, the concept of flow was introduced. And the more I listened, the more I understood, yeah, what I like about it is that it's positive, um, as a language. Flow as a concept, uh, it has a lot of things in it that. Are really positive and and balanced. So it's, it's a. Could say that it's a dynamic, uh, approach to. How, how we can work together as a group, how you can find your own rhythm. How you balance your boundaries, so you don't do too much and you don't do too little. Um, so there's, and and I like it that it's so positive and I, I am thinking about this idea. Uh, and it's an example, but it's a very deep one and it, it exists in the one like. The word trauma for me is a, is a negative word. Trauma is a word that has a heavy low to it. Uh, it sounds a bit like, I don't know, cancer is also this kind of word where if I just hear the word cancer, I get jolted. Um, and I'm trying to find the words and the pictures and the images of the positive side to it and I. Uh, I remember, for instance, this one hypnotherapist, I don't know if I talked about it in this group. He uses really positive imagery as well, like, uh, a grain, a blade of grass. In the desert or something is one of the titles of his books. About giving hope to very desperate places. And there is something about the, the kind of hope and the positivity that goes to the deepest level and it really acknowledges also the depths of it. Like one image I get is like, if, if you want to transport a tree, you, it's not easy because you've got all these roots in the ground. And you really need to capture around the roots and get the. Get the tree out and actually machine with that can capture like very broadly. It's like in the capture broadly under the trauma plate being. Up to more healthy imagery as an example of we transform also this language. Yeah. No. Positive negative, how do we turn it into something that were helpful for us to face what we're. Wanting to face like active hope, I think is also an example of it. Active hope is really about looking at, see and and facing it and looking at it and and. Saying, okay, like what can we do now? If you, if you never can do enough, what then like? Asking these really difficult questions, but from a positive place. And I think that's also fundamental in, in the group and how we approach things is. We go to these deeper levels, it's not like shining a bright aura of light and everything will be fine. Oh, it's really going to the depths and really understanding it in its deepest structure and its deepest, uh. Identity and then gradually, um. Making more search in language is one thing, but also an approach to, to the energy we put into things and how we. Things that it becomes more positive. That also in the deepest place and stuff, I think a lot in the, and I. What I learned over the weeks and months is, yeah, let's also frame it in a positive way so we. We don't have to be jolted in this deep dark place alone, but also. Already reaching by talking, reaching to the positive place by talking about it.
Yeah.
That's what I want to.
Thanks, thanks Eric. Appreciate it. Uh, Wendy, I feel like that matches a lot of your intuition around these things as well. Um, Wendy, 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 Wendy E, I see your lips moving and you're unmuted.
Um, so just putting it out there, Bo Lotto's book Deviate is brilliant, absolutely about senses. And what I was listening to and I know, um, is to be true from my neuroscience background. And know that I have actually worked in neuroscience and neurology and head injuries and things like that. So I've got quite deep experience here in the practical sense is that, um. When you've got a slightly lower mood state because of uncertainty, it makes you more alive to your senses. Which is where, um, change comes from and this is critical. So, um, positive, a positive mindset can actually be. And this is not at all to say what you just said there, Eric is not useful. Because what is possible is the best question to ask in any situation. But if you come in with a slightly discombobulated, um, stance point where. You're, you're not feeling necessarily you're succeeding, but you're not necessarily feeling that you're, um, failing. Your senses become more alive and you will then take in more of the environment and be more present to it. So there is actually value in the slight negative or the slight, the definite uncertainty, which for many people. Since humans absolutely crave certainty and control. Um, we're wired to, to find that sense of control and what you have to be is just that tiny bit out of control all of the time. And that will keep you most aware of everything that's going on you and, and paradoxically, even though that feels negative potentially. If you can just make that state of being in slight disarray, your normal state. Then you will have more information and you will actually make more progress together. But it's just enough disarray, so, um. I can never say his name, but, um, Mahali, to, to think Mahali, ah, one of these days.
Mahali chicks me high. Just there, fixing me high. Yeah.
And it's the same twice, um. You, you know, one of the preconditions for flow is this, um. This not knowing is actually really critical and not knowing is deeply uncomfortable. And you've got to get comfortable with being uncomfortable. And that isn't necessarily a positive state until you flip it. And it has to be at just the right level of difficulty for you to survive that. To be clear that the thing that's coming at you isn't actually going to kill you. Um, although it might, so it's a game, it could kill you. That, you know, that hamburger looks like it's coming at you very slowly and very appealing form. But literally it can be the thing that knocks you over. Um, so it's a game about being comfortable with uncertainty and keeping your senses alive. And I can't, um, I can't raise that book that, um, Bo Lotto wrote. Highly enough, it's really readable and it's the starting point, the senses are the starting point. And uncertainty and just hanging with the uncertainty and going through the whole chemet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a tricky, I want to add to that just to clarify, like for me, it's not about, um. Being, talking about the positive and always reading, reading the positivity. It's also about beating the negativity in a positive way, like, uh. Like looking into the sun is this book about, uh, and it's about death, it's about look. Positive way of framing what, what, what is the positive thing about looking at death together? What can you? What is the healing aspect of that? What is the, the, the recovery aspect of it? Or in process work, it's meeting the most heavy aggression and, and meeting the, the, the fact. That maybe some people killed each other, each other's family even then, but meeting that with a. A sense of reconciliation, of healing, uh.
Hmm.
Of remediation, the absolutely horrifying parts also of what's happening. But you transform it and you transmit it into something positive because it creates a sense of community. And each other in these deep sense, uh, depths of pain and it's not. It's tricky, it, it can become of course this kind of forced healing, which is not real healing and. And spiritual bypassing and all of that, but it's really, that's not, that's, that's one of the traps. Um, I hope I meet you there, Wendy.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, beautiful. There just a, a quick anecdote that, um, it's just another way to reinforce what, what Wendy was saying in my, um. In my martial arts training, like. Mythical, my mythical teacher always asked the question like, what's the right amount of fear you should have? Even as you get more and more competent, right? So it's like you're, you're being confronted with. An, an unknown force of unknown malevolence and unknown capacity to kill you. And how afraid of that should you be versus how bold, courageous, explorational, you know? And so there's always this idea that if you don't retain. If you're too fearful, you're paralyzed, you're dead, you're done. And if you're too competent, you're dead from your arrogance and pride, right? And so you have to have this reserve of. The deepest confidence and knowing and the, the knowing of what you're being even beyond death. So that you're not afraid to die, right? And this one, one or two on a scale of 10. Level of, um, fear or negativity or whatever that is, that's keeping you honest and causing you to perceive and be aware and. And heightened to the solutions that could emerge. So it feels like that same kind of thing where it's like. On a scale of zero to 10, you have to kind of set that level of negativity. And set it at an appropriate level. So you're bold, courageous, confident and moving into the unknown with. With courage and conviction and not so arrogant that you're immediately dead. So there's like that little edge. So I don't know if that, I think that's approximately there. Okay, Morgan.
I really like this topic. I've written a few, um, bullets, um, answering the question personally. If a group is in a flow state as a group, what does that look like? Here's, um. I guess I came up with about 10, I'll try to keep it brief, but some of these, I mean, are three hour long conversations potentially, but. Um, the first thing that came to mind was colocation. A group in a flow state generally is located. Next to one another in the same general space, or at least periodically, uh, we share auras. Um, this is seen esoterically as an island of light. I also see live collaboration. Like we're doing now. I also see asynchronous reporting and communications. There's a technical stack that's probably worth, uh, dissecting there, but, um. I see iterative planning cycles. I see hierarchical, multi-varied optimization. Um, to help us tune into one another and our ultimate objectives. I see project, open project roles that play to individual strengths. I see love-born and consensus-driven objectives. I see shared positive experiences. I see genuine curiosity and. Relationships. I see grounding and shared vibration and intention. And I see co-creative expression and feedback, which kind of overlap with a lot of, um, a lot of the sentiment we've been hearing, so. That's, uh, that's what comes to mind in responding to that original question.
It was beautiful, Morgan. Thank you. That was really, um, well-articulated.
Thank you.
There's, there's a piece I don't know if we'll get to today or not. Um, in our remaining 19 minutes. But on this feedback element, Wendy M and I had a. Conversation on it this morning, that there's this generative, co-creative side of expression. And then earlier, um, Wendy expressed that. Over our last months together, many times as we generatively co-create and express, we then sense a void. That doesn't allow us to properly co-create or get the energy loops back or whatever that is, right? It doesn't allow us to self-regulate, correct and redirect our energy towards what's, what's most emergent for us all together. Um, so. Some people in the group have been working on even technical solutions for that, for that feedback that would allow those cycles to start to close. Close quicker. So we might, we might not get there today, but it's a, it's a place we should go. Okay, let's go to, uh, Jason.
Yeah, to build on a couple of things, both, um, martial arts metaphor and, um. And what, uh, I think Wendy, you were talking about when we, um. We did an analysis on how to build any skill. And then also, um, thinking about the flow to do it. And we found that, um, besides having something to practice, so you need to have a method and a practice and a coach. Um, you needed to have a challenge and that challenge had to be something that. You didn't think you could do, but you actually could. Which actually means that there's a coach necessary. Because the coach keeps you in the zone of, of moving you beyond your own belief in your capabilities. And when you do achieve something you can't achieve, just like Wendy said, that's when the, not only do you hit the dopamine, but you hit the flow. And, um, and Toyota Kada is a version of that methodology, which is create a challenge. Create a set of smaller iterative experiments to run towards your challenge and then run your play. Um, practice your play and then, um, have a coach that allows you to do that. The interesting thing that we found was that almost everything. Is a quote unquote skill. From hope to positivity, there are a few things that are not skill, um, for example. Actually introversion, extroversion is not a skill, it's, uh, it's somewhat innate into. When a baby responds to light or away from light. Um, and so it's not, that's a, that's a reaction, but you can change that. You could change your introversion, extroversion, but, um, most things are skills. And, um, and so using that same pattern, we've been building various skills. Um, related to hope, positivity. Um, and a model around exceptional experiences for everyone that allows people to create psychological safety. In a system with the vulnerability of a person to allow them to kind of thrive. So.
Beautiful. The, the other key thing of that framing is it, is it changes everything. Someone earlier mentioned this idea of the agency that's so critical, like the restoration of the agency. And so if almost everything is a skill and can be learned and taught and progressed into some form. That totally restores the agency as opposed to if you feel like. Almost everything is random chance, can't be influenced, like it, it kind of puts you in this, um. Victimized state of running from the catastrophe or meta-crisis at hand. As opposed to courageously facing into it and learning skills and increasing manner to. Courageously confront and overcome it, which seems to be the better, the better pattern. Wendy M.
Yeah, so just to pull on that thread a little bit more, um. I love bringing in the research when it's patterning what people are speaking out from experience. Because for me, it's about adding to the pattern and saying, oh yes, this has been discovered somewhere else and it confirms it. And so I just, not that we all have to go run and look at the research, but I just want to speak here that. The, all the research from Carol Dweck on, uh, growth mindset is what we were just referring to there too. And that character strengths does a big piece of this because it provides people language of appreciation and positivity. And recognizing what your strengths are and patterning out, um, values that are at, that are actionable. And so it gives you a sense of control, so that fits into here as well. And I feel like there was one more in there somewhere as well, but it all, it's all really interrelated and it's, it's what I've been looking at for the last 10 years. And I keep kind of dancing around these things. And for me, these moments and, um, these conversations and other similar ones I'm having is, is finally the chance to. these conversations and other similar ones I'm having is, is finally the chance to merge all of these points of view, perspectives, backgrounds in research and insights into something technological. That's what you were just talking about, Jason, that can help support people towards their best self. And I just think that kind of stuff is super exciting. And if we can do any of that work together, that would be like heaven for me. So I wanted to say that. It also really liked what Wendy E. you were saying a while back about the unknown and the uncertainty, but combining that and combining that with what Eric was saying about the positivity, it made me also say another way to say that, that I practice in my life is a sense of trying to always be in a curiosity and wonder space. Because it's a, to me, it's the precursor to a crisis, right? If I can avert the crisis, it's because I've been curious about something coming at me long before it reaches me and I'm listening to it with a deep awareness. Now, does that always save me from something? No, of course not. It's life. But I have found that being in a space of curiosity and wonder allows me to go, go with the flow a lot better. So to me, it's that echo of the same thing. When we come together as a group, being comfortable with the unknown, I think is one way to say it and being curious is another way to say it. And then the last thing I wanted to say is this whole concept around Chiksi Miha's original insights into flow where we are on our learning edge. I, I'm using the term learning edge where we are challenged just enough, but not overwhelmed. And that was kind of his first discovery that he contributed and kind of was the grandfather of flow. And that's a good thing to remember as we invite other people into our group, when we keep talking about onboarding well, it's, it's helping them walk that edge, walking their learning edge, not what we want to teach them, but what did they want to learn and how quickly do they want to learn it? So we don't overwhelm them and we keep them challenged by the thing that's interesting them. And it's definitely squarely in the, in the camp of education. I'm sure we all have examples of how that hasn't gone well. So, and we're in times when it did go well. So just, just loving this conversation. Thank you.
That's such a deep. When I reflect back that that's one of the deepest challenges with, with the concepts we've been engaged in over the last, over the last couple of quarters is that if a group of people comes together around the highest, let's, let's say the meta crisis and the meta project and that opportunity, whatever, the highest level of what we're grappling with as a human species and what the opportunities and challenges are. That is entirely overwhelming for every one of us as individuals, right? Every one of us faces into the absolute greatest extent of what the problems and opportunities are that are at hand. And then, you know, is tempted to run away and pull the covers over our head and hide. And if we collectively do that, then we're, we're living in the wrong manner, right? So it's like, and I think that's why we realize we can't do it alone, right? Because each of us has a unique learning edge, each of us has a unique capacity to hold some portion of this. And if we're looking into a challenge that we're petrified by and it turns us to stone and we're frozen and we can't do anything and we fall into anxiety or depression, then that's not the right level of challenge for us. And for us as a community, we need to tackle that, right? So it's like, okay, how do we get each of us situated into the right learning edge? Let's just use that word, the right level of challenge that we can help one another succeed at. Maybe make those iteratively bigger, like quarter by quarter, so that each of us is growing towards our potential, which I think we would all like to do and we would all like to help one another do. And, but then this idea of how we create the conceptual space to hold the highest level challenge and opportunity of what we need to do collectively without having that crush us individually or locally is like the, that's to me, the great psychological challenge that we're up against, like as we look at the next seven years. I said like too much in that and I actually hurt myself during it. I'm going to self-correct there. Bill?
I liked what Wendy M. said about curiosity and wonder. And I've been thinking here about where I've seen the flow state develop in my own life. And one of the earliest places I saw it as, as a, I was old as five children. And the youngest two, I was very close to like, because I was much older than them and I was almost like a father figure. I would engage with them at the earliest stages, you know, changing their diapers and babysitting them and taking them on adventures and teaching them things. And with my own children, the same thing. And I've observed this about flow in my own life and what I've seen in others. It requires some kind of common recognition and language and trust that we're going to be in a group in a flow state to a certain extent, but little children may not have much equipment in the area of language yet. And even a child that can't speak. I've noticed that it's possible to get in a wonderful flow state with a little child communicating. And here's how I saw it happening. And I've done this a lot with my kids when they're real little. You make eye contact with a child, show interest in them, listen carefully with a happy expression and then find an object. And then say a word about the object and then let them just let that sink in, not, not a lot of work, just a word. And then say it again and then say it again. And they begin to see it and they recognize that there's something happening here and their, their minds are in such a plastic state of synapse strengthening as they are culturally imprinted and linguistically imprinted that they are wired to grab onto words and to connect. And so it's just amazing to me over the years to watch children learn. If you, if you are close and pay attention, which anyone who's a parent is looked in their child's eyes and taught them a word, you understand how it's just a, you, you're, you're drawn into that flow state with them because their intensity and their curiosity and hunger is so great. And so to apply this from what Wendy is saying, if if I, if I take this lesson to myself or what I've seen in children, what I just heard Wendy say, if I'm interested and curious enough and people know I'm interested to talk with them and I'm listening carefully and I'm, I'm, I'm attentive to what's happening. That has a tendency to draw them into wanting to connect that same way. But if I'm just waiting for an opportunity to say, you know, get my piece in, you know, just wait, 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 say something, you know, like so many people do in conversations. Then I'm not going to draw them into a flow state. I'm going to make them feel like I've just been waiting for an opportunity to interrupt and say my piece. And I, and little children don't have any problem with, with ego. They don't care if they ask a dumb question. It's not a dumb question to them. You know? Why do dogs poop? Why is that rock hard? You know? They don't care if they don't know something, they just, they just want to know what. And I think this idea of returning to a childlike wonder or rekindling what should always be there in us can be so encouraging to people because it creates a safe state. One last little thing, when I was, when my daughter was four, one day in a flurry of I can do that too. I said to her, you know what, Christina, I saw a modern art painting here. And I think I could paint one like that. I said, well, maybe we both could paint one like that. So I went to the law firm where I worked and on a Saturday with her with paints, canvases, we went into the basement library, spread everything out. And I said, and I kind of came up with this idea on the spur of the moment with her and I said, we're going to do, we're going to paint the same painting together at the same time. You can, and the rule is you can paint or draw anything you want and the other person can't completely change it, but you, you can't wipe it out, but you can change it only. You can add to or adjust. And at first we were anxious that, hey, I drew that thing and you changed it. Or I painted this thing and you painted over that corner of it. And so there was this early adjustment stage where we thought, hey, this is my painting. That was the first natural response. But after a little bit, it just clicked with both of us. This is our painting. It's not mine. It's not yours. It's ours. And so we, we just, we just got into this state where we're almost drooling painting this thing. And I've had that painting hanging in my house for years. And every time people have seen it, they say, where did you get that? You know, it's like you went to some modern art, you know, gallery and you bought a very nice painting or something. And I just laughed because it is the, one of the best things I ever experienced in a thing, in a, in a project with another human being where we both gave up our ideas and something that I would never painted and she wouldn't emerge in front of us. So I called it dual painting, D U E L. Cause it starts like a duel and it ends up duel, you know, D U A L. And over the years I practiced this and first time I went on a date with my wife, I, I went to her place, I showed up with paint. This is many years ago. She wondered what, what kind of guy is this? He has paints and brushes. Oh, she was an artist and I didn't even know that. I said, we're going to do what I call a dual painting. And she said it was the most romantic thing she'd ever done in her life. We were in this drooling dual state, painting a painting. And she would tell other women about it and I'd go, oh. But it's, it's been a tradition in our family to do dual paintings. And we've done it with couples who are struggling. And it's been an interesting mechanism, but I, I can't speak highly enough of all aspects of this flow state, because I think we are hungry to get into a state like this.
Ten second, and earlier before we go to Eric, we have a couple of minutes left here. But we took an improv class and that's basically the yes, the improv. It's like whatever somebody lays that down, you can't negate it. You have to say yes, and somehow build on it, right? So that, that improv sounds like that's basically an improvised painting. So it's, we could, we could play with that experiential learning. Okay, we just have a couple of minutes here, Eric.
I just wanted to give a few examples because it's yeah, what I hear popping up and like this different aspects of this, like I remember this place is a community place and people are accepted there and there are different ways and very simple ways often of dealing with people. And one was this guy, he had this wild look in his eyes and you could see him run around with an axe. He was very active, but you could also see it was a very traumatized guy. And if you talk to him, he would react very like he had these nasty comments and it would come from a very deep place. But he is like this very positive person and it's like, nobody would expect this from this person to be this positive. And it's, and it's a very simple way to change it around. Or another example is like the Klukuk Slender was a colored person that went there and started talking to people from the Klukuk Slender because he was in the band playing music for them or somehow. And then bit by bit, he, he learned to get their trust or there's this city where they used in there was a lot of violence in traffic. And the way to remediate it is they put it instead of normal traffic agents in this quite big city, they put clowns and it changed the atmosphere completely. And violence went down drastically. And I also remember a moment where I, I could see this person not being met in her deep despair and not being able to heal and change. And I was able to name the negative very precisely and it made her shift as well. And it's, that, that's another part. It's like you really have to be precise and meet and really recognize a person in pain. And, and I was doing it in a way that normally you would say is irritating. Like I was repeating like, oh, and you could do this again and again and again and then again. But I was tuning into their energy and it was correct for their energy. And they really thanked me for it after because it really liberated them from the sense of being completely stuck for years and years and not being met there. And people that are, and that are not reachable, they, they require something precise. Also, and I first like Richard Schwartz, he worked with the people that everybody wrote off, the people that committed the worst offenses, but they, he helped them heal and recover and become, yeah, good, like people contributing to society and living from their hearts. And I think, and, and there's something about what is one's deepest fear and blockage and cringe and like you just want to avoid it at all costs or or what in one moment might frighten me so deep and completely stuck in my life. Well, it might be another person's passion. And they might have found a way out of it. And it's, for me, it's about, and that's, and making those links, like who is really good at this specific issue or okay, this, this situation seems can we find someone who is recognizable, might reach this deepest place where this certain situation is and it could be really the most difficult issues like. Yeah, I have also examples there for mediation work and deep violent situations and stuff. So it's all possible. And I will name these examples just to put it out in the field. So we, we can look at it and recognize that this is possible and that this is also where we want to work from. This recognition of the deepest and at the same time the change. Yeah.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate that. Okay, we're, we're two minutes over. So Jason decided to jump. If anybody else has to jump or wants to thank you and honor your behalf. I'd like to just hear real quick what Wendy E. has to put in before we close out.
Yeah, I'd just like to honor Bill's story and Eric's contribution because I think it, it held, it shows why, why and how we can get so stuck with a lot of our online interactions and when we're not close to one another. And that was the first point that Morgan made about being co-located. Cause when you do tangible something, you've got all your senses that can physically be evoked, you're touching something. You know, you've got the pain and the smell and all that stuff and you can be in another place. Because our words come from our senses, but they're buried in, you know, count the number of decades you've lived. We are left with this really incomplete sense of communication because to get to what a word means for someone, you've got to dig way back to where that word was first learned, like like Bill was talking about, you know, that was decades and decades ago and that word has got layers and layers and layers and layers of meaning. And we're not talking about just one word. So we're, we're trying really hard here to aggregate what it is that we're holding between ourselves just with words online. It's pretty brave when you think about it. Because those words are like, you know, count the people, we've got nine here at the moment. And how many decades worth of learning one word have we got? And that one word and the values that go with it and the experiences are completely different. And every time we use 50 words, we've got 50 versions of our nine sets of experiences over however many decades of what that one word means. So we're really trying to hunt what that is and negotiate it all the time and we will never get it. But when you do the painting, you've got the paint on the paint and it doesn't matter. You don't actually have to have the word. So there's something really important about doing physical things with physical people that at least gives you that experience of flow that doesn't need the words. And you know, massive wikis and all the tools in the world, it is almost, it is impossible to trace what that meaning means, especially if it's of value. So you're chasing shadows the whole time. So yeah, I'm, I think do as many physical things as possible, even if it's in twos and threes across this group. I know Wendy M. and you and Kalu had meal together in New York recently. Lovely. Yeah. And I feel a little estranged over here in Australia. But yeah, nope, words are really tricky. They really are. And yet we have to use them. And try and have metaphors and other ways of making up for the lack of depth that we'll get to. And common experience certainly helps a lot for that.
Kalu, keep your hands on the wheel.
I think that, that speaks to the importance of, of us getting really good at helping people forge multiple circles and small groups, right? Because in addition to whatever these circles are, we're finding we're forging online, it's probably important to have our place based circles where we can get our hands dirty in a different way than this group comes together. Okay, so there's two people we haven't heard from. Forrest just had to drop. I think the last person that hasn't spoken today is Michael. And I personally would love to, before we go, just see if you have anything we'd like to drop in from your beautiful heart and soul, Michael.
Nothing really bubbling to get out. I've really gotten a lot out of what's been spoken. I I resonated with the I resonated with the, the. The, the possible metaphors for the, the practice of dual painting and the idea. I'm, I'm always um, struck by um, in, in groups. Like this one and lots of other ones I, I participate in. Um, the. The fact that there are so many of them. And even within them, there are individuals who are like engaged in some. Platform development. I've been working on this and I've got this way and. Um, it's very, very hard to. To dual paint in this, in this world of all of us trying to do good and what are the ways? That we um, you know, put our, our separate brushes to the same canvas instead of our own. Um, it's just the, the challenge of our times and it's um, or the challenge of our. Our chosen field here. Um, that, you know, we're, we're up against. You know, whatever else you can say about them. Your, you know, big tech companies and governments and, and you know, forces of. That are defending the way things are. Um, they're all together, painting on the same canvas and. We're individually. Um. Trying to find the way to do that. And we don't have the standards and the shared, you know, economic agreements. Um. That's really tough. So I'm, I, I wanna. Take that metaphor as, as a hopeful note, maybe it's another way to get that idea across to people. Um, and, and not just the recognition of how we're all on separate canvases.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. It's beautiful. Yeah. I think it goes back to, that just makes me think about conditions again, right? It's like, what, what are the? And it's almost the same, right? Or we started the conversation by talking about what are the. Pre-conditions and the pre-work that's required to show up and be in a state of flow. What are the pre-work and pre-conditions required to show up and dual paint? What are the pre-work and pre-conditions required to make dual painting go from a duel to a symphony? And how does that manifest if it's, you know, Phil and a daughter or granddaughter versus if it's um. Ten of us versus if it's eight billion of us, you know? And ideally. At some point, maybe, you know, the ultimate ideal was that we learned how to do that together, right? And so those are the patterns that we're sensing because eight billion people can't paint together, but. Two people can paint together, you know, maybe ten people can paint something together, you know, three groups painting. Three groups of ten painting things might be able to find an edge and blend it. You know, we're seeing that in AI that you can take these different pictures and then like, oh, let's fill in the middle, right? So it's kind of that kind of thing, you know, it's like this emergent phenomenon, but it's a great analogy, brother.
Or just agree on a format so that we can make a mosaic.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Love it. Okay, Wendy?
Yeah, just, just real quick to wrap it. Um. Flow feels good. So we want more of it. So it means when we provide conditions and people come in who, and they feel that vibe in the room. Even if they've never experienced it before, they're gonna say, I want more of that. And they're gonna seek it out in other places. And I think that's true for a lot of positive emotions, but particularly true when it's a group vibe. You know, and so you feel it maybe at Disney World when you go and you find yourself putting the Mickey ears on. But I, we're talking about creating a vibe that's for innovation and creativity and group support. And so I'm just want to put that on, that this idea that once we start figuring this out, it will be catching.
Yes, it is catching. Yeah, that, there's something deeply within us that, that's positively awarded and. Impulse us on the experience also. Okay, beautiful. Okay, so um. Thank you so much. That was a delightful call. Wendy M. Special gratitude for the work you put in this last week to. Consolidate, synthesize and be able to present practice and takes a lot of effort and work to synthesize. And so I want to deeply appreciate knowing all you brought today.
Sure. And I was in flow doing it. So.
So it was joyful. Yeah.
It was joyful. So if anybody has a question along the way and they want to send me one, they want me to consider something. Um, my time is tight, but especially if you feel like it has meaning for this group or another group that you're in. Not just a random research exploration, but we could do that too. That, that's just a different exercise. But if you think it has particular meaning or purpose for this group or other groups. Then I'd love to hear from you. Thanks.
Okay, so we have two really concrete things happening over the next three weeks as we get prepared for the, for the next year. One is um. Wendy M. or Wendy E., I think I heard you guys volunteer to get together and do a session on a pre. Survey or communication that could go out to people that want to continue engaging. So we can gauge the stories and experiences that have already happened. And then we'll get together with a group of five we discussed and kind of um, refine that. And it would be great to get that out. I don't know when you guys think it's possible, but maybe we could get it out by. December fifteenth or something and give everybody the second half of the month to respond to it. Um, if that's unrealistic, no problem, but maybe over the next. Short period of time, we could just kind of, we could do that. So that's great. And then the other thing is if we can all think about whether we or any of the other. Three or five people we could think of would want to um, participate together in a twelve week series at the opening of the year. To go through all we've been learning and experiencing in a more structured way that we talked about. That'd be great for us to begin that, that kind of group together. And that provides kind of a clear path through the next ninety days. And then I think as we reflect on. All those things in the new year, there's so much that was kind of born this spring. Flourish through the summer. Some of the things got, you know, laid down in the fall and we've got all these ideas, but all of that is. Such valuable life and ideas that are formed and um, I trust that that will all come bursting into new life this spring. So. Thank you so much for being here today. Deeply love and appreciate each of you and I look forward to chatting with you through the week. And hopefully seeing most of you next week. I'll see you soon. All right. Much love and appreciation. See you guys soon. Have a wonderful, joyful week.